If I might stand and pledge allegiance to the flag with this place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We will start opening meetings from Mike Walker on crosshair.
Good evening. I'd like to bring the Chair Canada to read the development commission order, please. Mine is usually three minutes from the last meeting.
Minutes, January twenty-fifth, twenty-ten, or twenty-eleven, pardon me. President Mike Walker opened the meeting at six p.m., Senator Danielson, Michael Donchel, Kenny Oles, Mark Young, Brian Key, President, also President of the Chair Canada Commission, Jerome Janik, Minister of Revenue, Brian Key, Danielson, Mr. Prue, and Daniel Second, and Mr. Prue, National Affairs Officer, Del, Mike Walker, President, Kyle Schilling, Vice President, Brian Key, Secretary, Pre-Plaid, County Auditor, Adam Treger. Second Amendment to the deposit agreement was discussed, question of concern, waiting on this final approval of Second Amendment, ownership of Bridge One eighty-eight on Bayon D'Arcy City Project, county ownership. There were some grammar issues in language on page three of the deposit agreement, and a brief window was discussed about completion of the projects. The next redevelopment commission was scheduled for February seventeenth, twenty-eleven at six p.m. Brian Key's motion to adjourn at approximately six forty-five, Danielson's second.
Motion to approve, two minutes.
Second.
High.
Motion through.
This evening, for the agenda item, for an interim, we have one agenda item to draft, and that would be the Second Amendment to tax increment revenue deposit agreement, which is to consider the completion of certain projects benefiting the Honda economic area related to tax increment revenues and the amendment related to.
Okay. Today is March twenty-fourth, two thousand eleven, the time is six thirty p.m., and a special meeting, Greensburg County Council is called to order. At this time, would everyone silence your electronic devices, headphones, et cetera? A roll call vote, please, Jim.
Here.
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 Dale.
Here.
Jamie.
Here.
Ellen.
Here.
Thank you, Kim. Kim?
I'd like to call this meeting of the Greensburg City Redevelopment Commission to, sorry to hear. June, would you be good enough to call the roll call? I'm sorry, Valiant, would you? Didn't see a city nearby, I was only.
Ken Dorni.
Yes.
Tom Schmollberg.
Here.
Doug Fry.
Here.
Derek Polling.
Here.
Bo Rettler.
Here.
Dave Wabell.
Here.
Thank you. Since we have another TIP meeting next week, and this is presented as a special meeting, joint meeting, I think we'll just do our, read our minutes for the city TIP at our next meeting. Basically, the reason we're here as the mayor and Mike and Ben came was for approval of the revised agreement TIP money out of the Honda area. So, I probably want to have Rick, could you?
Sure.
Just wondering, right?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Rick Hall. I'm an attorney at Barnes and Dorford, who you know has been helping with the Honda financing, and I'm really excited to be here tonight. I often don't have good news to share with people in these times, but tonight is a, there is some great news to share. And that is, as you know, when the original financing package was put together to pay for the infrastructure to support the Honda facility, that being the water improvements and the sewer improvements that were needed for the new plant, at that time Honda agreed to advance twenty-two point one million dollars to, through the purchase of TIP bonds issued by the county, and then the proceeds of those bonds would be used to pay for the sewer and water utility improvements. And the, they did that. That money's been advanced, but because of some good construction bids, a good bidding environment that we've had in the last couple of years, the cost estimates were actually about three and a half million dollars less than what was estimated. Honda did not have the obligation to advance all of the money, they just had the obligation to advance the amount that was necessary to pay for the sewer and the water utility improvements. They, in the meantime, there have been some other projects that serve the Honda area that are of benefit to Honda, and it would be a benefit to the city and the county. And the city and the county don't have a lot of other resources to pay for those projects. Honda, recognizing that and the fact that these would all benefit their site and be helpful to them, agreed to advance the remaining amount and use those monies for these additional projects. Gary's going to walk through the list of their projects and the amount of money and how the money flows, et cetera. But the upshot is that Honda will, is willing to make the additional advance through the county TIP bonds. They would then be repaid this money from their tax dollars when they, when those taxes are paid over time as over those bonds. There wouldn't be any other funds of the city or the county that would go over to that TIP. The reason each of these bodies was asked to get together and consider this issue is that the way the Honda financing package is set up, there's a tax increment revenue finance agreement, a revenue deposit agreement that describes how the TIP revenue is going to flow, how it's going to be used to pay back the county bonds. It's also pledged to city utility revenue bonds that were used to finance improvements as well. And in this master agreement, it provides that the proceeds of the county TIP bonds can be used for the water and sewer utility projects. Because we're adding these additional projects as a permitted use of the proceeds of those bonds, that agreement has to be amended. And the parties to that agreement are the city, the city redevelopment commission, the county, the county redevelopment commission, the bond trustee, who really acts on behalf of the state and Honda. And then also having to approve it is the state and Honda. Both the state and Honda have approved the amendment to the agreement or are on board with using these additional funds to be advanced by Honda to do these projects. And earlier this week, the county commissioners approved the amendment to the revenue deposit agreement. So each of these bodies this evening are being asked to similarly approve this amendment to the revenue deposit agreement, which would allow us to accomplish this expenditure of additional funds on these additional projects. So with that, I'll introduce Gary, who can take you through the numbers if we can respect all of us.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Gary Malone. I have with me Matt Eckler. Matt's actually going to go and go through and explain the numbers, because does everyone know Matt Eckler's the one that does all the work in our office? You should have received a couple of sets of schedules. There should be a set of schedules dated March the fourteenth that has all the detail. We've handed out the schedules for you, for your reference. To make it a little easier, we also have had a set of PowerPoint schedules that we thought we'd be good through as well. As Rick mentioned, this project has really done very well. Costs have come in under what was budgeted. We've already drawn down all the funds needed to complete the original scope of the project. So the city currently has money to pay for the remaining, there were water lines, there's money that's been set aside for the wells, money set aside for administrative building of the sewer plant. So all the projects contemplated in the original project, that money's been drawn down and set aside. So all we're talking about now is those additional funds that are remaining. As Matt will point out, the revenues from the TIP, Honda's been very straightforward with us. The revenues that are coming in are what we anticipated. It's working the way it's supposed to work. So really, it's what happens with the balance of these funds, the opportunity to draw these funds down to take care of some other projects that are needed that will benefit Honda. So Matt, you would want to go through that.
Thank you, Gary. As Gary said, my name is Matt Eckler, and I'm also a thump ball. And rather than wading through the sea of numbers that are the March fourteenth schedules, we thought it would be better to approach this with a PowerPoint that summarized the highlights of it and is a little easier to understand. I'll direct your attention to the slide number two, which is the summary of the bonds. And this is the summary of the originally authorized twenty-two point one million dollar bond amount that was issued in two thousand and eight. To date, there have been four draws in the amount of around eighteen point eight million dollars, leaving a remaining draw capacity of just under three point three million dollars. So what we've done is we've looked at the remaining draw capacity, and we've proposed a fifth draw, which would close next week in the amount of three million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. The pie chart to the right is just simply a graphical illustration of the five draws and how they've broken out over time. Turn to page three, you'll see the proposed projects that are to be undertaken by the city. And these were determined, as all of you know, through discussions between both the city and the county on prioritized projects that not only are priorities for the city, but also importantly serve the Honda TIP area. And it was felt that the Honda TIP revenues would be a good source of revenue to fund these projects. Similarly, page four shows the proposed projects that are to be undertaken by the county. These were arrived at through a similar process, and this is the final list. One thing that I do want to draw your attention to, on the final line, and this is on the city projects as well as the contingencies and issuance costs, that line item represents monies that will be used to pay the legal fees associated with this final draw, financial advisor fees, other fees associated with the financing, and then to have an available contingency amount in case any of these projects run over budget. So that money is available. There's a little bit of fluff in there. Page five is kind of the final, most important schedule that I wanted to discuss. And what this illustrates is the estimated annual TIP revenues from the Honda development versus the debt service obligations that are secured by those Honda TIP revenues. You'll notice right now, in two thousand and eleven, we have about one point three million dollars in estimated revenues that are going to be coming in, and just over a half million dollars in obligations to be paid in the form of the county TIP bonds, which are payable, and then also the SRF bonds that were issued to fund water and sewer utility improvements. One feature of those SRF bonds that I want to draw your attention to is the actual final maturity of those bonds is in two thousand and twenty-eight, but part of that revenue deposit agreement that Rick referenced earlier mandates that surplus TIP revenues, as they're allocated to the city, must first go to repay the SRF bonds off early to get that obligation out of the way. So we're actually projecting that the bonds will mature, will be fully redeemed five years early in two thousand and twenty-three instead of the scheduled final maturity of two thousand and twenty-eight. So that's positive to get that debt off the books faster. You'll see that as the abatements from the Honda TIP area roll off, that the revenues level off at about five point three million dollars in two thousand and twenty, providing, as you see, more than enough coverage for the SRF bonds and the Honda TIP bonds. The Honda TIP bonds cap out at about a two point two million dollar a year annual payment. Slides five and six really just summarize the last couple pages of the longer handout. And this is the allocation of the TIP revenues on an annual basis. Slide six deals with the bond payments and then the excess tax increment. And then page seven illustrates the allocation of the excess tax increment revenues per the revenue deposit agreement. We thought that rather you having to go through all of the numbers on that final page, I believe it's page thirteen, it'd be easier to see it graphically, so you can follow exactly where those revenues are going. At that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on these slides, and I'm sure Rick would be available to answer any questions on the revenue deposit agreement that you might have.
And as I mentioned earlier, these last couple of slides, it's important to note that this really hasn't changed from two thousand and seventeen, the agreements were originally contemplated. It still works exactly the same way that it was intended to work back then. Give us simply new numbers to show where this is coming from.
Matt, you said on page four there's a contingency that the issuance caused, some contingency for an overdraw? Well, some from the contingency is available in case there is maybe some construction change orders, things of that nature. There was additional capacity in the final, the amount available to be drawn on the final draw, so we included a contingency fund just in case. So it'll go between, and we've allocated that equally between the city and the county.
What's going with the excess? The excess, we've described the city's portion of the excess as the discretion of the city. The county's portion of the excess is the discretion of the county. It's going to be used for related types of projects. It's not used for those projects. Then it goes to back into the bond sinking fund to prepay that. That's where those contingencies look prepaid at. It's not being imposed.
So you're saying, Gary, if purchases and jobs come in under what we've asked for, that the city and county TIP can agree to spend it on certain situations in the Honda TIP area?
It has to be for projects that are contemplated and authorized within that deposit agreement. And it's couldn't even be outside this go to the deposit agreement. And then if there's still money left over, then those money's good to prepaid bonds.
Questions, June?
I didn't understand why you put the contingency in.
It's just to make a balance. We just sent some extra funds to be able to equal the bond issue. It's just simply for Honda. Another thing to remember, too, none of these projects have been paid. And so these are simply estimates at this point, so it would not be uncommon to have some contingency at this point.
And I think what I was trying to get to, correct me if I'm wrong, we had set amounts, which we agreed to, and that was the amount that we were supposed to receive.
Right. I thought, you know, the city got so much, county got so much. You got your jobs completed in that project, because it's written in here that any money that possibly could go over, I'm having trouble finding it, that the city or the county would not be obligated to finish or something. I'm just curious as to why there was that additional contingency in there.
It's simply to equal the peanut bonds, as they're asking. I mean, there's authorization of twenty-two point one million. It tracks all the other draws for the city now.
So that it actually takes the total up to twenty-two point one?
Correct.
As opposed to? So the main draw is the total amount, but the proposed TIP draw is, what, seven hundred thousand? Or seventy thousand less, so that's where that comes into play. That's what you're saying?
And if the money's not needed, it's simply those appropriated now?
And what difference?
No, you're right. That's a big question.
But if we did overshoot the estimated value or cost, we could utilize part of that seventy-two thousand?
What do you anticipate the actual closing, and are there any fees to be, and what is the amount that you're going to?
Please not cash away.
So that your fees there will come out of the excess TIP?
Correct. It'll come out of that contingency. And the same with the orange one.
What would be a wild guess? Honda fees and stuff. And then you've done this for a number of years. You surely got a wild guess?
I'd have a wild guess. I honestly have not. We built the county up through middle part of December, as I recall. It's not my money. So if I could do the work from the last building until now, and I'd have to work, it wouldn't be. I just don't have, I'll be happy to, as soon as I get back to the office, I'll get a file from the mayor. I'd be afraid to ask, because I just don't have.
Yeah.
I don't know, Rick, he's probably not.
We haven't built since last May, maybe, so I don't know.
This bill will be larger.
Build the services for people.
Where does this money go when that kind of end is split? If it doesn't split, until the projects are started?
The money, just the positive, it'll go to Bank of New York. Bank of New York Services, the trustee, and it'll go into a city fund and into a county, the county's sub-construction fund, repair.
That's right. So each, and that's part of the need to amend the agreement, is that you have the bank, that's an independent third party that holds the money, and then it only approves disbursements for these different projects. So that's why the contingency could handle an overrun within any of these projects, but it could not be used for some other project that's not on the list, because the trustee can review the invoice and make sure that it relates to one of these projects.
So the interest is creating from this bounty stays in each?
It will stay in each account, yes.
Please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding was part of the reason for the special agreement and trying to get this done now was that Honda wanted this done by closing their business here at the end of this month?
They did. They wanted it closed by March thirty-first. So if approved this evening, then they will wire money on March thirty-first.
I think really how this started, Jerome and I started working on this, correct, Jerome? We knew there was excess money there. We wondered if Honda could permit us to utilize this for city and county needs within the Honda area. We helped out the state, everybody told you that idea.
I think it's a very generous offer by Honda.
There's needs here from city and county both, under general situations. We'd have to cut it out of general fund, the city or county. In this situation here, it will come out of the Honda TIP funds. It will affect the general fund or the tax revenue in the city and county end. So I see it as an all loose, as an all win situation. Rick, do you have a resolution?
I have resolutions that each of you, I think, have received for your respective bodies. These resolutions approve the final draw in the use of these additional projects, and then also approves the amendment to the revenue deposit agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the resolutions.
And resolutions, we have to, resolutions for the city and county TIP and city council?
That's right. Each has their own individual resolution. So what we would request is that each of these bodies in turn have a motion on that resolution and follow those monies.
And before we get into that, does anyone have questions regarding proposed projects, whether it be city or county?
What was the new truck for? It just says new truck under city project.
That is another tandem axle trailer screw, dump truck, install, spreader, snow plow. We have one for the purchase of the actual tax revenue city to this one, it's identical. If we need two of them, and worst case scenario, as we had last year, we'd have to buy them in case something did happen.
And the location of two signals?
Right now, what is going on there, one is at the exit off of seventy-four onto four twenty-one. That's a dangerous situation there.
Right.
And of course, the end dot will have to approve that, that to be put in. But trying to finance it for them, you probably have a better chance of getting that loss there. The second one is at the entrance to Honda. And Rick may help me here, but I believe Honda has made a statement that if they don't have, make a decision by traffic counts and the actual need for it by the end of December thirty-first, oh twelve.
That's right.
That that money would be put back into the excess, correct?
That's right. Then if there's a hundred and fifty-five thousand set aside for that traffic light, they want to improve the, what that's going to be spent on. If they don't give the approval by the end of two thousand and twelve, then that money can be used on additional project if everybody agrees to it, all these same parties. Or if not, then it will go to big bad service.
And I do know there's something else that Honda had mentioned. And my understanding was in the original plan, and then when they wasn't sure they didn't have enough to meet everything the needs to pay it in full, originally there was lights in the plan along the front of Honda. And those lights were taken out of the plan. Now there's the possibility, because there are people walking out there, whether they're not at night time, and maybe install new lighting. And I know the TIP money can be used for that, but what my concern is, it probably costs eight dollars a month per light. And for the distance and the area that would be hard lighting, how do you maintain that? Does that have to come out of the general fund?
There would be city living, or?
City, yes.
Yeah, that would be a city expense.
See if you put one every how many feet for two miles, that's a lot of lights.
I have a question, Eric. How were these projects, or what, who decided on the project?
I sat down with Rick Dick to see how we could improve the water situation in the west side of Greensburg. He can come up with the water line there, and he has a map, and he would like to see that, where that line would be installed. And the Liberty Circle East, that's purchased a right-of-way opposition for widening of Mendel Road, which we're going to be doing probably in oh twelve. Weather warning siren as the city grows out that direction. Scott testing, the bar chief, probably a good idea, we'd place another one out there in that area. The new truck was submitted by the street superintendent, the needs of that department.
So he's down with the department head?
Yes. And the new traffic scene was basically that came from a request from Honda to be considered. The bridge number eighty-eight, that's the bridge, the old Peanut Hill Bridge, to try to widen it along with the same as the road to make it a safer situation. And that's how those items, projects go about.
Jerome, you had a question, please?
Well, my question, I had a comment when Mr. Polling asked about the truck. You also noticed that the county has requested a truck, but the line below that, the line isn't the application. But that's a project that, judged in the city, we talked about, and cooperative, we, we find that the county would like to have. This prime base is an application, but the city would be able to utilize that equipment, or that, the prime, from that. The county's tried it this year and has had very encouraging success. tried it this year and has had very encouraging success. Just wanted to talk about that.
And the city and county have traded around here, if you will, on the brine, like Jerome just said, trying to help the city out, working with us. And then on the bridge, the county is responsible for all bridge maintenance. So we put in, in our project, we've been a road project, so it'll be done at that time. And once the bridge is done, we will dedicate it back over to the county for maintenance. That way it does not come out of the county revenue deficit. The commissioners, like I said, commissioners have all approved it, the other thing that's going on, the county TIF, they've been a little more involved in it than the city TIF has. And the reason I haven't brought it to the city council, the city TIF reserve that I have, was I didn't want to say this is going to happen, that it not happened. And that was the point of the review.
Rick, I have the documents we handed, may I pass for you? Should I present the resolution? Would we have Peter Kennedy developing recently had any questions on the resolution? And then the chair would entertain a motion to approve the Peter Kennedy.
Do you want to sign it a resolution number, or?
Yeah, I'm sure. I guess it's a dash one.
I motion we approve the resolution as far as I can.
Go ahead, second.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those both?
Okay. We're moving on here to the city. We have resolution 2011 dash two. And that is in regards to the resolution, county council, approving the execution of Second Amendment to the tax amendment, revenue deposit agreement, and addressing matters within there to entertain a motion in that resolution.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mayor, should I vote?
You can vote twice. You can vote twice. And you and Matt both sign.
I'll.
Okay. And is there any more? I see, I said, I welcome you.
I'll vote yes this time.
Bill?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Are there any questions from anybody on the city, the development commission, looking to do that? It was pretty straightforward, they were being addressed by a gentleman before us. They don't have a resolution about it.
You guys have to pass the resolution, will you?
None of this, no.
So if there's no questions, I call for motion to approve the resolution of the city and county, the development commission for the execution of the second amendment for the tax increment, revenue deposit agreement.
I make a motion to reject the resolution.
You have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. I know you do a lot of questions.
Ken Norman?
Yes.
Don Schmalberg?
Yes.
Deb Fry?
Yes.
Darrell Poling?
Yes.
Paul Rappel?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I have, unless there were other questions. It's very generous of Honda to do this. All these projects have either been significantly delayed or have been put on the backs of the other areas, the system, and now they've always acted in the community, it's stuffed up, and been a great partner. And, you know, this cooperation, I mean, the city and the county here is really exemplary. It doesn't always happen across the state this way, but this project continues to be a great part of our development.
I'd like to take this time also to thank Honda for their generosity. I'd like to take this time to thank the county TIF board for your consideration and your cooperation and working well with the city, with the whole work, I think, in the line of, for the burden of this community. And we really appreciate the city guys, and thank the council and the board as well.
I echo the comments that they had to be very generous for us. We're all obviously very aware of the disaster in Japan and our hearts for those folks. They're our neighbors. They're generous. I also want to thank the element of Minneapolis to move on and their call to, for pretending this to us, making it understandable.
There's something else we've left out. The commissioners were the first ones to approve this. And Jerome, would you like to speak, please?
Yeah, because on behalf of commissioners, you know, this agreement that was reached with Honda when they first came there has obviously proven to be a very good agreement. Realizing the benefit that we promised when they came here, Honda was very conscientious to take care of this area, I think, from the beginning of the struggle, and it followed through in that promise. It's a rare situation, I think, where we can get all these entities together, city and county, because I know there are a lot of counties, other counties in the state, the cities and counties don't do a lot of it. We've had very good dialogue here since last summer, I think, trying to get this all worked out. We've not rushed it, to make sure that we would consider each other's feelings, needs, and particularly by Dennis Place, very good projects. And I'm really appreciative of all the groups here involved. It's a real benefit to this area, and I just thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jerome. There's also more things the city and county are working on together. We're trying to get things going, and as soon as we have something to speak about, I'll bring up your attention as soon as I can, some of the things that we're on here. Anything else that anyone, anything you'd like to notice?
I would just ask that you don't leave about signing the resolution. If I could get two, two copies signed.
Well, here's Peter Kennedy, he's actually, what do you have to motion to, Jerry?
I've just, I've got Second Amendment. Does this mean to be signed? What does?
Yeah, I have copies of that that have to be signed as well. So when you adjourn, I'll bring it up.
Doesn't actually say draft on it?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
So, welcome to the chair. Thank you.
I move the board of adjourn.
Your time motion to adjourn, city council?
I move.
Thank you. You adjourn.
Unless the city TIF wants to hang on, I'll have the motion for adjourn. Second, say. Thank you.